Tomorrow is the third year memorial for the Pulse massacre that took place here in our community. And so I would ask all of you, as we rise for a moment of silence, that you remember those families that lost their loved ones and those that are still healing, and that you join us in our seek and search for peace and love and acceptance and support of one another from all of the different places that we come from. And I also want to ask that we hear from member Lopez regarding a very sad situation that took place with one of our family members earlier this week. Thank you all. Member Lopez?
Thank you, Madam Chair. At this time, I would like us to take a moment to reflect and pay our respects to the friends of families of Richard Molano, who passed away Wednesday, May 29. For more than 12 years, Mr. Molano was a well-loved member of our OCPS family. He began his career in 2006 as an exceptional education paraprofessional at Discovery Middle and joined Vista Lakes Elementary as an autistic teacher in 2012. Mr. Molano is described as a priceless employee, one whose kindness and impact extends far beyond the classroom. He was an advocate for each one of his students and was adored by their families. As a community of educators, we stand with the family as the healing process begins. Though your hearts may be heavy, I pray that you find delight in knowing that his knowledge, ideals, and legacy will continue for generations to come. To Mr. Molano's family, friends, students, and colleagues, may you find strength, encouragement, and a peace that surpasses all understanding.
And now, member Lopez, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Yes. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dr. Jenkins, do you have any recognitions? Or you want me to lead off with the recognitions I have? Let me start with, we have some wonderful recognitions this evening. We have a very special guest with us tonight, University High School valedictorian. For those of you who are here with us already, you know this, but for those of you who are just joining us, we have the privilege and the honor of hearing the speech that our University High School valedictorian, Kriya Naidu, was unable to give just at her graduation just two weeks ago. And we are thrilled and honored to have her here. Kriya?
Madam Chair, she's coming. We have students being recognized for another event. If you'd come down front, there are plenty of seats down here. Please come down and have a seat.
And Kriya, if you don't mind, I'm going to ask you to pause just a minute because I want everybody to be seated, and I want you to have our full attention. And thank you, Dr. Jenkins.
We've got debate champions and FSU STEM candidates. So happy you're here. Please come down and have a seat.
We have some more seats in the front here. Looks like we're getting there. To anybody who might be watching us either live or via our internet channel, if you're wondering what's taking so long, we have a packed house, and we're just waiting to find seating for everybody here. But you'll want to stay with us. Wow.
If there are any of my staff members in this front section, I'd ask you to move to the back so we have room for our students being recognized. Any staff members? Help me out. Get them seated quickly. Debate club members, STEM members, give them seats first. Thank you.
Thank you. Stay tuned. Thank you, thank you. Thank you. All right, is everybody that wants to sit seated? Do we have a show of hands? If you want a seat and you haven't found a seat, show of hands. Okay, then, I would ask for your full attention. We have, as I said before, we have a great honor. Unfortunately, one of our valedictorians was not able to give her commencement speech as she wanted to and as we expected her to. And so the superintendent has invited her, as the rest of the board, to join us tonight so that we can hear her full speech. Kriya, Ms. Naidu, welcome.
So this is the same speech that I posted online?
Hang on, this won't do. Where's the mic, guys?
Hello?
Okay, let's try again.
This is the same?
No, the mic is not working. How can this happen? It worked before when she was there. We heard her beautifully.
So this is the same speech that I posted online and the speech prior to the changes requested by OCPS. Graduates, parents, esteemed faculty and administration, good afternoon and congratulations to the University High School class of 2019. I couldn't think of any way to begin this speech that didn't involve some sappy cliche about growing up, so I guess I'll just get right into it. So Yurian Yashmi, you and I are sisters. Thank you for always picking me up. Remember that if you fall, I'll be there to pick you up too, after I finish laughing, of course. Mom, Dad, I want to thank you the most. Thank you for all the love and support you have given me over the past 18 years. Thank you for the warm meals on the table when I get home late from work, and thank you for all the road trips and all the ice cream that came with it. And thank you for instilling upon me the most important lesson of them all. And that lesson, my friends, is that no matter how many obstacles you may face, and no matter how many times you might fall, always get back on your feet and keep running. You see, in 1995, my parents emigrated from South Africa and moved here to America with only $500 to their name. And with all the opportunities that this country has afforded them, they were able to build a life for themselves and eventually myself and my sisters. And thanks to that, I have made it here today. However, they faced their fair share of challenges: prejudice, difficulty securing jobs, pay parity, and much more. But every time they were knocked down, they got back up. Their success is an example of what immigrants, people of color, and everyone can achieve with hard work, even when they find themselves in a system that seems to work against them. As Lin-Manuel Miranda said, "Immigrants, we get the job done." But my parents and I aren't the only immigrants. Most everyone here in this arena today is, if not immigrant themselves, descended from someone who moved to America with a dream in their heart as well. Immigrants are the teachers who inspire us, and they're the police and the soldiers who protect us; they're the engineers who design our skylines and the construction workers who build them; they're the farmers who feed us, and the artists and entertainers who touch our hearts. Immigrants are the cougars here today preparing to become the future for an America that isn't even their own yet. I'm sure that all of us, in our past four years of high school, while making memories of deans kissing pigs, raccoons, and vending machines, and toilet fires in the 25 Building have been knocked down. Saturday tutoring, SATs, finals, and all the stress that came with it at the time seemed like obstacles impossible to overcome. Barriers between us and success kicking our feet out from under us. Nevertheless, we triumphed, and every time we found ourselves on the ground, we stood back up and we made it here today. Graduates, as you enter this new chapter of your life and throw up your graduation cap today, I hope you remember to use what you have learned in high school to not only get ahead in life, but to help others get ahead with you. I hope you remember to continue to learn and grow in all aspects of your life. And I hope you remember, like rapper and philosopher Cardi B says, "Knock me down nine times, but I get up 10." Thank you and congratulations again to the class of 2019.
You've got to go shake all of our hands because that's what we do.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First off, I just want to say congratulations. That was a wonderful speech, and I'm just so proud that Dr. Jenkins invited her here this evening to let her share that with the community. I felt that it was very inspiring. So I just want to say to Kira, good luck. Congratulations. Go Knights. I am an alumni from Knights, so it warms my heart to know that she'll be attending there in the fall, and I just couldn't be more proud. So thank you.
Thank you. And in the interest of time, can I just have a unanimous ditto on that?
Ditto.
Ditto. So proud. Okay. Tonight, we have another special guest with us, all the way from Florida State University. Just happens to be my alma mater, so a little proud on that one. Professor Paul Cottle. I hope I have your name right. Is it Cottle? Awesome, thank you. He is a physics professor. Dr. Cottle was instrumental in the partnership that currently exists with our district. That partnership is opening doors for OCPS to recruit and hire college students as STEM tutors at our high schools. And that program is now creating a pipeline from tutor to teacher in Orange County Public Schools. Thank you for being here, Professor Cottle. The professor joined the FSU faculty in 1986 after earning his PhD in physics at Yale and received the National Science Foundation's Presidential Young Investigators Award in 1987. Love to hear a little more about that. Cottle's research is experimental, is in experimental nuclear physics, and he has published more than 100 articles. Cottle also founded FSU's Studio Physics Program, which provides evidence-based, hands-on instructions for students majoring in engineering, the physical sciences, and computing. Mr. Cottle is a member of, was a member of the committee that wrote Florida's K-12 science standards in 2007 and '08, and since then, he's been an advocate for improving the preparation of the state's K-8 STEM, the students in STEM fields. And that brings me to another great partnership we have with FSU and the University of Central Florida. Both universities collaborate and assist with providing professional development during the summer for our science teachers. And this past spring, FSU hosted a STEM field trip for more than 50 students from Carver, Walker, Robinson, Memorial, and Westridge Middle Schools so that those students could learn about STEM opportunities in college. Professor Cottle, such an honor to have you with us.
Thank you.
And welcome.
Thank you very much, and thank you for your encouragement. It means a great deal to me. I'm glad I'm able to make some small contribution to the education of students in this district. But that brings me to what's really important here, and that is the students who came to see us and the students at those schools that there wasn't enough room on the bus for, the fantastic educators like Mr. Chavez and Mr. McMillian. And I have a confession. I'm sorry, member Gallo, I want those students in my classroom at FSU five years from now. So where are the parents here? Us, right? Bring them to me. That's what I want. And it's about the students, it's about the educators, and I need to say it's about the parents who give these kids the support they need
Absolutely.
to succeed. You've just done a marvelous job with your kids. Keep going, and like I said, bring them to me. So tonight, I want to say one other thing, and I'm talking about the educators and the parents, but I think you deserve some congratulations here for supporting programs that give kids from a wide range of backgrounds an opportunity to become engineers, physicists, and computer scientists through programs like The Calculus Project because of the innovative things you're doing to try to recruit strong individuals in math and science into your teaching force. Bonnie's here someplace. The work I've done with your staff the last year has just been a great joy, and I've really enjoyed it very much. And I need to say one more thing. Orange County is the best district in the state of Florida for giving a broad range of students opportunities to become engineers, physicists, and computer scientists. You folks deserve a round of applause for that. So the next thing I want to do is introduce five of the students who came on the field trip with us to talk about their experiences there. Four of them are from Memorial Middle School, one is from Carver Middle School. There are Alicia Brown, Bana Murphy, Bakara Lewis, Simone Maddow, and Sarah Dubison.
Welcome, ladies.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Alicia Brown.
I'm Bana Murphy.
Bakara Lewis.
Simone Maddow.
And us four, we are from Memorial, and we are the participants that attended on the tour to Florida State University. The trip to Florida State University was very interesting. The school is very big and has lots of history. We got to meet the president of the university. We then went to the medical school, National High Magnet Field Laboratory, and did experiments with their magnets.
When we visited the mag lab, I thought it would be hard, but surprisingly, I felt like I knew something. I understood the science behind the activity, and I felt like I could really attend FSU. We built our very own electromagnet with a battery, and we also got to see the largest and strongest magnet in the world.
We met with students in the medical school. We learned that to get into FSU, you need to have a high GPA. And the med school students talked to us about how important it is to work hard in high school.
I learned from the FSU students that talk to us to never give up, keep trying even when times get tough, get back up and keep going. It was a good opportunity to come four years early and get advice on how to get my future looking good.
Come on over to the mic. We gonna, please, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Sarah Dubison, and I am an upcoming eighth grader at the great Carver Middle School. Thank you Superintendent Jenkins and the school board members for the opportunity to share my recent FSU experience with you. I was able to attend a STEM-focused trip to Florida State University. It was an eye-opening experience for me in that I didn't know how large the FSU campus is. The most impactful part of the trip was having the opportunity to hear current and upcoming medical students share their experiences about studying priorities and self-discipline. They helped me understand how focused I needed to be in high school as well as college. Their panel was truly motivational. While at FSU, we also saw the world's largest electromagnet. Did you know it can magnify organisms down to their molecule level? I would also like to thank OCPS for making this trip possible. Hopefully, more students will be able to go next year. Thank you.
Member Cobert, you got a comment you want to make to the girls?
I do. And where's Professor Cottle? He's over there, right?
Yes.
So just last month, my son, who's an OCPS grad, graduated from Florida State with a degree in physics. So he is a high-energy experimental physicist who will be attending graduate school at Rutgers in the fall, but he credits his physics teacher here, Mr. Undy, and the amazing, amazing physics department at Florida State. And he was asked at Florida State why he didn't go to University of Florida, and he said, you know, if I wanted to be an engineer or something different, I might have gone there, but I want pure physics. And Florida State has the faculty, the programs, the quality, and if your experience there was a seed planted, know that there are great things that can come from that. I'm so proud of you guys for stepping out and taking this trip and this journey. And I told my son after grad school, he should consider coming back and being a physics teacher for OCPS. So congratulations to all of you. Thank you so much for the program that you put on for our students and what you do for all of the students there. Great, great program. Thank you.
Member Gallo.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to say ditto to what member Cobert said. Congratulations, girls. That's so awesome. I do want to say that while my loyalty is with UCF because I am a devout Knight fan, my heart is actually at FSU because both of my children attend that school, as is my money, and my oldest will be graduating from FSU in August. So thank you so much.
Well, we also want to recognize the Foundation for Funding Shirts and Backpacks for the Students and Chaperones who attended the FSU field trip. I understand that you have T-shirts for each of the board members, which is great because I forgot to wear my garden in gold. And we also have, we also have something for Dr. Throttel as a thank you for the partnership that we've enjoyed. And we'd like to present you with this plaque. And, thank you. Do you have the plaque? Yeah, we wanted to present you with this plaque. Which we hope will always remind you of the profound impact that you are having here, right here in Central Florida on so many of our students. Please.
One more thing I'd like to do. We got to meet five of the students who attended the field trip. Could the rest of you who came on the trip or in the audience, please stand so we can recognize you? And because these students can't achieve what they're achieving without their help with the chaperones and the parents, the parents, please stand up too to be recognized. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And we're going to close out this segment, hearing from Vice Chair Gordon, who has a lot to be proud of right now.
I sure do, and I really would like to thank Dr. Jenkins and her wonderful staff for making this happen. But I think, Dr. Cottle, you and your staff put the icing on the cake. I would like the students to stand one more time, please. I know, I think it's Ridgewood, I mean, Carver, Westridge, Memorial, and one other, isn't it? Robbinswood?
Yes.
And Walker. The Walker students, half of them live in School Board District 5, the other half lives in Linda Cobert, but everybody else is a member of School Board District 5. So I just want to say that this is a dream come true. When the board asked Dr. Jenkins to do something simular, we had no idea that it was going to extend into this. To hear our youth come back at a stately university and say what they said up here today, and each one of you could do it. But I want the parents, just stand again. Stand, parents, because let me tell you what. You did not desert us. You could have gone anywhere in the district that you wanted because we're a school of choice, but you chose to do your community school, and I love you from the bottom of my heart, I know this board does. You have made us so proud, and each one of your middle school is a university. When we go on that campus, we do not see middle school students. We actually see university students. They are walking like university students and carrying theirselves a little fight every now and then, and that's what university kids do. But the thing about it is, I am so proud that you stuck with your child and allowed us to educate your child. So everybody on this board knows that my famous saying is, "It's a poor frog that does not praise its own pond." And you all have made us proud. Thank you, Dr. Cottle and your staff. Thank you, Dr. Jenkins, and your excellent staff that helped to put this together. And thank you, Foundation.
And there's one more person that I need to recognize associated with that, and that is, I believe he's in the audience with us, Adam Lemee. He is a physics teacher in residence at UCF, and we thank you for being here as well, for your partnership with Orange County Public Schools. Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on. We definitely have a number of successful, we've had an incredible, successful year. But when it comes to debate teams and clubs, it's been about five years since this initiative was enhanced across the district, and we are so proud of the students, how far these students have come. I tell you what, right now, I would not want to debate a single one of them. I think the biggest fear that all of us up here on the board have is that before you know it, you guys are going to be out running for office, and one of us might have to debate you, and we will lose. I didn't say it, she said it. And listen, I got to tell you, I think we all know debate is not easy. I think everybody knows that. But here's what a lot of people don't realize. Debate helps students develop critical thinking and analytical skills. It helps foster the ability to think on one's feet and to formulate a well-supported argument, which is so valuable in life, so valuable in life, especially the mock trials. They teach students legal procedures and research skills. So with that said, these students are certainly some of the best of the best when it comes to debating. Let's start with the introductions from four high schools and two middle schools. We have some champions in the room tonight. We'll let the coaches do the honors, and beginning with Timber Creek High School, Beth Eskin.
Good evening. Thank you, OCPS, for recognizing the hard work of our students. From Timber Creek High School, we'd like to recognize tonight our outgoing team captain, Natalie Chowdhury. Natalie is a semifinalist. She actually finished 10th in the nation at our first national championship two weeks ago. So Natalie, please come up. Also like to recognize our incoming captains, Natalia Grikovic. Natalia was a semifinalist at the state championship this year. So Natalia, please. I'd also like to recognize Natalie's sister, Lois Chowdhury. Natalie and Lois competed in an event called Duo Interpretation at the University of Pennsylvania in February, and they finished as semifinalists. I also have another, an incoming debate captain, Anna Bello from Timber Creek. She qualified to the national championship. And finally, from my school, Nathan Law, who is a novice, a first-year debater, who not only made it to the final round at the Florida Blue Key Tournament at the University of Florida, he also made it to the final round at the novice state championship in humorous interpretation of literature. So congratulations to all of our students.
Thank you. Congratulations. Want to come up?
Yes.
We're not going to let you have the mic because you might want to debate us. because you might want to debate us. And next, we're going to hear from Apopka High School debate coach, Kathy Brown.
I do want to start by saying thank you to the whole board for the support that we have had for the team this year, because we would not have been able to travel like we have if that had not been the case. So, I want to start with our senior, our graduated senior, Brody Beauchamp. He has been with us for, since he was a freshman. I started doing this five years ago. And he's my first kid that's gone all the way through. He started out in Duo Interpretation of Literature. And he also has done several other speech events. But this year has been his best year. He has championed at University of Florida the Blue Key National Circuit Debate Tournament in informative speaking. We went on to several other tournaments where he was a finalist. The most important one, I think, probably to us, is Tournament of Champions, where the best of the best go. And he placed fourth in informative speaking there. And is qualified for Nationals, which we will be heading to on Sunday. We are leaving for Dallas. The other thing that has been wonderful about Brody is that he has mentored younger students. And so, the next person I want to call up is Alanis Cruz. She is a freshman. Her partner, unfortunately, was unable to be with us, Ruby Nunez. She has had a family emergency. She will be back in town. But they championed their very first year competing at the Florida Forensic League Novice State Tournament in Duo Interpretation of Literature. And also, she double-entered, and so did Ruby. And Alanis placed second in Program Oral Interpretation of Literature, and Ruby, third in humorous speaking. So, humorous interpretation of literature. Thank you for correcting me. She will be coaching younger students now. She's going to go all the way through with me, I know. Yes. Okay. And then we have someone who's going to be running for president one day. That is Kendall Lindsay. She competes in Student Congress. She is a, has been a sophomore. She's a rising junior. She has been to a number of tournaments and finals. Her best was at University of Pennsylvania, where she placed sixth in Student Congress. And most recently, she was a finalist at the Tournament of Champions, also in Kentucky. And she, but all of these kids will be heading to Nationals again with us in Dallas, leaving Sunday.
Coaches can come up too. Kathy, Beth. Okay. From West Orange High School, debate coach, Stan Banks. Uh-oh. Stan Banks. Okay. I need a lifeline. Do we have anybody here from West Orange High School? All right, let's keep moving. From Windermere High School, Assistant Principal Elizabeth Kennedy. They're on their way. Okay. They coming? Like, from the back? Ah, there we go. Thank you.
Some who know me may know that I'm not Elizabeth Kennedy. So, I'm here in her stead. But I'm here to recognize De'Alis Fitzgerald, who was the winner of the original oratory competition. Not sure if he made it tonight.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. So, we are then on, that was representing Windermere? Okay. Then from Glen Ridge Middle School, debate coach Nikki Tringus. No? Okay. Oh, okay. You have information. We have intel.
Nikki couldn't be here tonight. So, we'd like to recognize our middle school champion at our Central Florida Debate Initiative Championship, middle school championship, Ella Herbert, in original oratory.
And from Innovation Middle School, debate coach, Robin Fiehler.
Well, Robin is actually my daughter. And she's on her way home from Philadelphia this weekend. So, I'll stand in her stead. I'm not sure if her students were able to make it. I didn't see them. Their principal is here, Dr. Maya Stray. Anissa Amerikin and Cara Lacona were champions, middle school champions, in Duo Interpretation at the Central Florida Debate Initiative Championship. Here?
All right. We have, I think, I think that is it. I think that's our last school. Did I miss anybody that's here? And we somehow overlooked you. All right. Super. We have another school here tonight to be recognized for being the home to another group of Special Olympians. The board will remember that just, I'm sorry, did I miss somebody? Mr. Rodriguez?
Madam Chair, just a moment of personal privilege.
Of course.
I want to recognize, well, two things. First of all, for those of you that don't know me, I'm a big Florida State person. So, all of you that went to Florida State, great work. But I would really not be sitting here in this chair had I not taken debate in high school. And there were many times where those travels, those experiences, the Harvard, the Emory, the places I went, my parents, who were immigrants, would never have taken me to those places. It was because of those they shaped and curved the life that I have today. And Tara Tedra, please stand up, because she is a debate champion. Big short in there. She has, single-handedly, as a young lawyer, and maybe not, I think you're still a young lawyer, technically, right? And so, she has, single-handedly, brought debate back to Orange County Public Schools. I was shocked it was not a part of our curriculum as when she came onboard as a volunteer. And we went to Wake Forest and saw firsthand, in three or four years, her team placed nationally. An amazing, amazing young lawyer, a great community asset. And thank you for what you do. But for all of you that take debate, it is those hard times, the research and everything else you put in, it will come back in spades. Whether you ever debate, become a lawyer, please don't. Do whatever you want to do. But thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And let me also recognize Member Bird.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, I want to congratulate all of these stellar competitors. This is no easy task, doing these debate tournaments. And it's, actually, this is very near and dear to my heart, because my own daughter fell in love with it this year as a freshman. And she competed. In fact, she just got back from Milwaukee for a Nationals tournament and had the opportunity to meet kids from all over the nation. And I believe that opportunity, she never would have had that opportunity otherwise. You know, she grew so much this year from it and has found a passion. So, I'm extremely proud and excited to have all the debate champions here tonight. And I want to take a moment to thank Beth and Tara for all of your hard work on the Central Florida Debate Initiative and putting OCPS in the spotlight a little bit. You know, a few weeks ago, actually, a couple months ago, we had the honor of hosting Education Commissioner Richard Corcoran to Apopka High School. Go Blue Darters! And he came to here, a debate tournament, actually, to see here some of the kids. And some of them are actually here tonight. And those kids blew him away. I know they did, because they blew me away and everyone else in the room. But, in fact, one of the things they were talking about, they were debating whether or not to send aid packages to Yemen. I don't know about you, but I probably couldn't debate that. And I still don't even know which way I stand on it, because they both were so good on either side. So, I know he was impressed, because at the end of the legislative session, just a few weeks after that, we got word that one of the bills, the civics bill, had a little amendment added to it that said the hours that a high school student devotes to the Florida Debate Initiative, also known as the Central Florida Debate Initiative. And then he lists a few other programs. Other similar programs will, shall count towards service work requirement for the Florida Bright Future Scholarship Program. So, we are so excited that that happened. And I'm just so excited to have you guys here tonight. These skills, as the chair mentioned, these skills that these kids learn in speech and debate are skills that will last them a lifetime and have a significant impact on their lives. You know, in fact, I gave all of you a little fact sheet on speech and debate up here. And I wanted to make sure that you look at the section on Outcomes in Urban Schools. There's some really interesting information. Their graduation rate's 40% higher than of debating students than non-debating peers. African-American Mills had an average graduation rate 70% higher than non-debating peers. I think fellow board members that this type of activity should have our full support. And as this initiative, from the Central Florida Debate Initiative, gains traction throughout the state with the support from the governor and from the Secretary Corcoran, I believe that since this initiative started here in OCPS that we should be a model for our state. Definitely, I think, to give children the opportunity and skills to find their voice in this world is a very worthy objective. So, what I would like for us to do is make it a goal of OCPS to get these highly competitive debate teams in every high school that we have. I know that many of, all the high schools, I think, have speech and debate classes. And many of them have teams. But there's really a handful of them that are highly competitive, that do regional, state, and national competitions. And that's where the magic sauce is, you know? So, I would love to see that. And I would really love for us, Madam Chair, tonight, to kind of, maybe get a consensus from the board and take this up as a new board priority or a goal for us for the next couple of years to focus on getting these debate teams in the schools, high schools.
Okay. Very good. So, we'll take that up at the end of our meeting, where we would normally take up new initiatives and suggestions by board members. Now, with that, the board will remember, just, I think it was our last meeting and the meeting before that, we recognized a lot of our Special Olympians. And tonight, we have another school here being, for, recognized for being the home to another Special Olympic champion. For the second year in a row, the Olympia Titans soccer team has brought home. You can clap. They have brought home the championship in the state games. And we can have an entire, can we have the entire team stand to be recognized? Okay. So, I think that we have the head coach, Scott Carnavelli, and the principal here. Am I right? Can you introduce your team for us? We'd like to hear their names. And if we can get them to squeeze out of their row and come up, I know we'd all love to shake their hands if they're all right with that.
So, many of the players, we're out of town. Or a couple of them got sick. So, we only have a couple here.
No, go ahead and stand up. Yeah. You can stand. It's okay. You can stand. Thank you.
Esteban Estrada. So, these are the three that came here today. Like I said, we had a couple others. It was 12 on the team. But everyone else was out of town.
We are so proud of you guys. We are so proud of you. All right. That concludes all of our recognitions of our students. Dr. Jenkins, do we have any newly appointed administrators to recognize tonight?
We have 12, Madam Chair, members of the board. That partially explains.
You know what? With 12, should we let our students go home for the night?
I think we should.
Why don't we? Okay. Students, you're free to go home. We really enjoyed this opportunity to celebrate your success tonight. What a quiet and orderly group. Boy, somebody's doing something right around here, huh? A lot of people, a lot of parents, a lot of administrators, a lot of teachers, a lot of principals, and a lot of great students. All right. Dr. Jenkins, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We first have the new assistant principal for Ocoee High School, who was previously a resource teacher there. That is Kelsey Berg.
Thank you, School Board members, Superintendent Jenkins and staff, for this opportunity to serve at Ocoee High School. I'd like to recognize my professional mentors, Ms. Lisa Sowers, Mr. Sam Davis, Mr. Clarence Truitt, Ms. Tamira Hutchinson, Dr. Mark Shanoff, and Ms. Laura Bucy. I'd also like to thank and introduce my family members that are with me this evening, my mother and father, Janet and Johan. Finally, thank you to the Ocoee High School team members and Principal Bucy, who came out to welcome me this evening.
Next, we have Mary Clark, who was resource teacher at Eccleston Elementary. She will be the new assistant principal at Castleview Elementary.
Thank you, School Board members, Superintendent Jenkins and staff, for this opportunity to serve at Castleview Elementary. I'd like to thank my professional mentors, Dr. Hilton, Ms. Young, and Mrs. Waika, for your endless support and encouragement. I'd like to thank my husband, Chris, and my children, Christopher and Caitlin. Finally, thank you to the Castleview team members and Principal Dr. Julie Hilton, who came out to welcome me tonight.
And next, we have Carmen McQueen McNeely, who is resource teacher at ACE, will be the new assistant principal at Jackson Middle School.
Thank you, School Board members, Superintendent Jenkins and staff, for the opportunity to serve at Jackson Middle School. I'd like to recognize my professional mentor, Wendy Ivory. I'd also like to thank and introduce my family members that are with me this evening, my mother Gloria, and the loves of my life, my children Reagan, Nicholas, and Jayden. Finally, thank you to the Jackson Middle School team members and Principal Russo, who came out to welcome me this evening.
Next, we have Ryan Moore, resource teacher at Pershing, will be the new assistant principal at Pershing School.
Thank you, Madam Chair Jacobs, and School Board members, and Superintendent Jenkins and staff. And thank you. I'd like to recognize my professional mentors, Ms. Bernadette Jaster and Allison Kirby. I'd like to introduce my family, Um, I'd like to introduce my family, who came out to support me, um, my wife Margaret, my mom Cindy, my dad Chris, my brother Cory, and thank you to the Pershing School team and Principal Jaster, who came out to support me and welcome me. Thank you very much.
Marcia Owen was dean at Winter Park High School, will be the new Assistant Principal at Apopka High School.
Thank you, school board members, Superintendent Jenkins, and staff for this opportunity to serve at Apopka High School. I'd like to recognize my professional mentors, Dr. James Lawson, Mrs. Erin Vakio, Dr. Angela Slaughter, Soraya Miller, and retired OCPS Administrator, Dr. Gloria Stevens. I'd also like to thank and introduce my family members that are with me this evening, my awesome husband Trevor, and our two sons, Trevor and Trent. Finally, thank you to Apopka High School team members and Principal Heinz, who came with me this evening and welcoming me. Thank you.
Giulietta Genie was Assistant Principal at Metro West Elementary under our Master Principal Development Program, she will be the new principal now at Metro West.
Thank you, school board members, Superintendent Jenkins and staff for giving me this opportunity to serve at Metro West family. I want to take this time to thank and recognize my professional mentors, first and foremost, my first mentor, Dr. Brenda Cunningham, whose legacy and memory will always be with me as I become, uh, the new leader at Metro West. I want to recognize Mrs. Smith, my current mentor, Dr. Butler, Mr. John Wright, Mr. Greg Moody, Mrs. Margaret Irving, and Charles Lindell, that supported and always mentored me along the way. I want to thank my family members who couldn't be here tonight, but they're watching live, my wonderful children, Coltrin and Catherine Genie, who are successful products of public system, and they make me a very proud mom, and to my parents, who sacrificed everything to give me a great education. I want to thank, uh, the Riverside staff members that are here tonight, Lakemont and Metro West, and my sister's school, West Point, that came here to be here with me and to celebrate this moment. Thank you.
Let me go to Altrisa Grubbs Holmes, who is the Assistant Principal at West Point Elementary, these sister schools, under the Master Principalship of Pat Smith, new principal at West Point Elementary.
Thank you, school board members, Superintendent Jenkins and staff, for this opportunity to serve at West Point Elementary School. I'd like to recognize my professional mentors, Mr. Greg Moody, Mrs. Patricia Smith, Mr. Douglas Guthrie, Mrs. Talbert Irving, and Mr. Charles Lindlaw. I'd also like to think this, take this opportunity to thank my family, my parents, James and Carol, my husband Marcus, my daughters Paige and Peyton, my sister Courtney, my nephew Jaden, and my extended family, Mr. and Mrs. Graham. Finally, thank you to the West Point School team members and Principal Smith, who came out to welcome me this evening.
In case you're wondering, she thinks I won't call her out, um, Pat Smith now gets to go back into retirement, since we have successfully cloned her for West Point and Metro West. Stand up, Pat Smith, so we can recognize you. Gina Grant was Acting Assistant Principal at Corner Lake, she will now be officially the Assistant Principal for Corner Lake Middle School.
Thank you, school board members, Superintendent Jenkins, and staff for this opportunity to serve at Corner Lake Middle School. I'd like to recognize my professional mentors that are here today, Mr. Jeff Hancock and Ms. Suzanne Hurley. I'd also like to thank my family, introduce, I'm sorry, my family members that are with me this evening, my mom and aunt, who are watching live, and my husband, who has stood by me this whole entire process. Finally, thank you so much to the awesome Corner Lake staff members and awesome Principal Dr. Chanu for giving me this opportunity and who came out to welcome me this evening. Thank you.
Assistant Principal at Meadowbrook Middle, and this, yeah. See, you should have waited, I was going to say, and this year's District Assistant Principal of the Year. New principal at Meadowbrook Middle, David Hardrick.
Thank you, school board members, Superintendent Jenkins and staff for this opportunity to serve at Meadowbrook Middle School. I'd like to recognize my professional mentors, Dr. Kathleen Gordon, Dr. Maria Vasquez, Dr. Bridget Williams, Dr. Kathleen Shuger, Dr. James Lawson, Dr. Rahim Jones, Dr. Tashonda Brown Cannon, Dr. Kathy Pope, Jean Brown, Sharon Jenkins, Dr. Joy Taylor, Belinda Davis, Dr. Lynn Walker, Pam Carlson, Minnie Smith, Oscar Geary, Robin Brown, Christine Rogers, and Dr. Marilyn Doyle. I'd also like to introduce my mom, who's here tonight, Ms. Vanel Hardrick, she's up there. And two of me other family members tonight, so y'all just wave your hands. There you go. All right. And I'd, I'd like to thank all the Meadowbrook staff team members who came out to welcome me.
Oh, okay, we got, we gotta pause here, 'cause, um, 'cause the vice chair has something to say. He's got a lot of mentors, he's got a lot of mentors. I just want to say, this is really cool that so many people mentored you. Either that, or why did it take so many people to mentor you?
He didn't, he not only just mentored us, he did all of our dissertation papers. And got them together, and, and we don't mean like he did it, you know, you gotta do it yourself. But, um, all of the technical part of it, with Dr. Lawson and everybody, he saw to it that we were published and well-published, and now all of us will be able to march and feel great, but just to have your own student, your own neighbor, Mom, you know, you know, we just, we love, Dr. Jenkins loves you so much, you know she loves you. But y'all better, you, you, you all better enjoy, you all better enjoy Dr. Hardrick now, but, okay, all right, that's all I have to say. Enjoy him now, and for those of you that don't know him, you'll get to know, but you already know him because he's our Assistant Principal of the Year. But I gotta say, straight out of District Five.
Oh, boy.
Love you.
And, yeah, and Dr. Jenkins.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and just for the record, I love all of these new appointees. Don't want anybody to feel slighted, left out. Lauren Limachelli Watson, Assistant Principal at ACE, will be the new principal at Lake George Elementary School.
Thank you, school board members, Superintendent Jenkins, and staff for this opportunity to serve at Lake George Elementary. I'd like to recognize my professional mentor, Ms. Wendy Ivory. I'd also like to thank and introduce my family members that are with me this evening, my mother and father, Dora and Tony, my husband Nate, and my OCPS ACE family that is here. Finally, thank you to the Lake George team members for supporting me and welcoming me this evening.
Jill Pritz is Acting Assistant Principal at Odyssey Middle, she will become the new principal at Odyssey Middle.
Thank you, school board members, Superintendent Jenkins, and staff for this opportunity to serve at Odyssey Middle School. I'd like to recognize my professional mentors, Dr. Patricia Fritzler, Mrs. Beatrice Smith, Mr. Sean Brown, Mr. Charles Lindlaw, and Mr. Gregory Moody. I'd also like to thank and introduce my one and only husband, Gabriel, who's with me tonight. Finally, thank you to the Odyssey Middle School family for coming out tonight, Principal Smith, who came out to welcome me.
Ashlyn Ramirez, interim principal at Union Park Elementary, will now be the principal at Union Park Elementary School.
Thank you, school board members, Superintendent Jenkins and staff for this opportunity to serve at Union Park Elementary. I'd like to thank my mentors who have pushed me to pursue my dreams and provided me with unwavering support along the way. I'd also like to thank and acknowledge my husband, my family, my former slash forever students, their families that came out to support me, um, my friends, my colleagues, former and current, that are here this evening to support me. Finally, thank you to the Union Park Elementary team members that came out to support and welcome me this evening. I'm excited.
That's it, Madam Chair.
I'm sorry, that's it? That was fun. That was really fun. Everybody is very happy. Good job. Okay, you know what? You all get to go home too. Okay, well, yeah, enough fun for the night. Everybody, um, who doesn't need to be here, you're, you're excused, but, uh, and congratulations. Okay. Dr. Jenkins, whenever you're ready. Yeah, yeah. That's what you said.
So, so tonight, for our strategic plan update, we are reviewing our digital curriculum. And before you is Mr. Rob, Dr. Rob Bixler, to begin our presentation.
Good evening, good evening, everyone. Thank you, Madam Chair, school board members, Superintendent Jenkins and staff, for the opportunity to share our digital learning strategic plan update with you. My name is Rob Bixler, Associate Superintendent for Curriculum and Digital Learning. Joining me tonight are Marielle Milano, Director for Digital Curriculum, excuse me, Maurice Dragon, Senior Director for Digital Learning, and our special guest, Ms. Ann Lanow, Master Principal for Millenia and Millenia Gardens Elementary School. Okay. Orange County Public Schools has a long history, it's not showing on the screen, oh, here it is. Orange County Public Schools has a long history of technology innovation led by the school board of Orange County. The LaunchDed Digital Learning Program began as a small, seven-school pilot in the fall of 2013, with eight thousand devices deployed. It has now grown to include one-to-one digital learning environments in all middle and high schools, and will include over a hundred and thirty thousand devices deployed to students and staff by August of 2019. From the pilot, the LaunchDed program was built in strategic increments over the last six years. These include selecting the device platforms and features in 2013, implementing Launchpad, our single sign-on platform, in 2014, passing a digital learning board policy and selecting Google Suite for Education in 2015, launching the program toolkit and citizen citizenship courses in 2016, adopting Canvas as our learning management system, publishing the Family Technology Handbook in 2017, and deploying over twenty thousand hotspots in 2018. Each and every step of development was focused on supporting the OCPS vision of being the top producer of successful students in the nation. As a leader in digital learning, we frequently welcome educators from around the globe to learn from our experiences. Recently, we welcomed roughly three, two-hundred-and-thirty educators attending the Future of Educational Technology Conference to aid of our LaunchDed sites, where they visited classrooms focused on project-based learning, online collaboration, use of very digital tools, and how to monitor student progress. At Freedom High School, students adorned tables with quotes explaining how using technology helps them achieve their academic goals. We are proud of our progress, and OCPS has been recognized over the years with awards from the Center for Digital Education, which include the Digital Curriculum and Content Award, and the Digital Schools District Award. Last year, we were recognized by the Learning Council as their winner for the best digital program in the nation. The Florida Council of Instructional Technology Leaders named Principal Ann Lanow as their two-hundred, their 2018 Innovative Principal of the Year, and Principal Bill Floyd was a past winner for his work leading Ocoee High School as our, one of our original one-to-one pilot schools. The LaunchDed Digital Learning Program maintains an intense focus on student achievement by providing access to digital tools and resources to achieve the Florida's standards and to close achievement gaps. While every school may not have a one-to-one device, every school has access to digital tools and resources. A core part of our strategy is to provide access to digital tools and resources to simplify the steps a student or teacher must take to get to the information they need. In our increasingly digital world, a teacher and student should not have to remember seven different usernames and a capital letter, eight-digit with a special character password just to get to their digital resources. That's just too hard. Launchpad is the district's digital dashboard. On Launchpad, you can find one-click access to the instructional resources. Because it's so easy to use, Launchpad has over one million logins this school year across elementary, middle, and high schools. When we first began using Launchpad five years ago, we averaged around twelve thousand logins a day. We now average close to three-hundred-and-sixty thousand logins a day. The green digital backpack in Launchpad is a key part of our overall strategy to both increase and simplify access to digital resources. All centrally adopted materials must provide access through Launchpad. Once on Launchpad, a student clicks on the green backpack, where they will find an easy-to-understand grid of their personal schedule. Under each section is an icon that reflects a digital tool or instructional material that they will need for that class. Some icons represent the digital access to the physical textbook, and others represent digital materials that will further enhance their learning. As a blended learning environment, students still have access to many of the workbooks and other consumables in their classrooms also. which include the Digital Curriculum and Content Award and the Digital Schools District Award. Last year, we were recognized by the Learning Council as their winner for the best digital program in the nation. The Florida Council of Instructional Technology Leaders named Principal Ann Lanow as their 2018 Innovative Principal of the Year. And Principal Bill Floyd was a past winner for his work leading Ocoee High School as our, one of our original one-to-one pilot schools.
The Launch Ed Digital Learning Program maintains an intense focus on student achievement by providing access to digital tools and resources to achieve the Florida standards and to close achievement gaps. While every school may not have a one-to-one device, every school has access to digital tools and resources. A core part of our strategy is to provide access to digital tools and resources to simplify the steps a student or teacher must take to get to the information they need. In our increasingly digital world, a teacher and student should not have to remember seven different usernames and a capital letter, eight-digit with a special character password just to get to their digital resources. That's just too hard. Launchpad is the district's digital dashboard. On Launchpad, you can find one-click access to the instructional resources. Because it's so easy to use, Launchpad has over 1 million logins this school year across elementary, middle, and high schools. When we first began using Launchpad five years ago, we averaged around 12,000 logins a day. We now average close to 360,000 logins a day. The green digital backpack in Launchpad is a key part of our overall strategy to both increase and simplify access to digital resources. All centrally adopted materials must provide access through Launchpad. Once on Launchpad, a student clicks on the green backpack where they will find an easy-to-understand grid of their personal schedule. Under each section is an icon that reflects a digital tool or instructional material that they will need for that class. Some icons represent the digital access to the physical textbook and others represent digital materials that will further enhance their learning. As a blended learning environment, students still have access to many of the workbooks and other consumables in their classrooms also. We do not believe in or encourage paperless or all-digital classroom environments. We believe in both paper and digital resources used with purpose to provide students with the best instructional materials based on the activity they are completing. Florida Statute 1003.4203 on digital materials, CAPE Digital Tools Certificates and Technical Assistance provides a charge to make CAPE Digital Tools Certificates accessible. CAPE Digital Tools Certificates provides students the ability to gain experience and skill using applications that will aid them in school and after they graduate and enter the workforce. The CAPE Digital Tools Certificate's goal established by the state looks at the amount of certificates earned by eighth graders who are about to enter high school. These courses provide a natural fit to the content covered in the CAPE Digital Tools exams. Overall, our fourth through eighth graders have earned over 5,452 CAPE Digital Tools Certificates, with Ocoee Middle School earning 393 CAPE Digital Tools Certificates in the 2017-2018 school year alone. CAPE Digital Tools Certificates are available in database skills, video editing, word processing, coding, multimedia, and other basic information and technology-related topics. This year so far, at least 2,821 certificates have been earned at 26 middle schools. This number doesn't, however, capture the true picture of students who are taking advantage of this opportunity. Last year, 1,200-- I'm sorry, last year, 128,250 modules were accessed and this year, we already have 161,467 student launches of ICT online.
I'm on it. Okay. I found this on the web.
I apologize. Somehow you heard me. Digital Citizenship Courses. The digital citizenship courses are provided via Canvas to every middle and high school student. The courses educate students on key areas of online interactions such as being safe online, avoiding scams, and cyberbullying prevention tips. The digital citizenship courses are an important part of the overall steps we take to qualify for E-Rate funding. This past year, over 65,635 students completed the digital course specific to their grade level. This represents all middle and high school students. Next year, digital citizenship courses will be introduced for elementary school students. At the start of the Launch Ed program, not all students had equitable access to digital resources. In order to ensure that all schools have access, we had to increase the amount of digital devices in schools. Choosing the right platform and feature set for our district took two years. In the first seven schools, we piloted five different operating systems and seven different form factors to see what the best combination for student learning would be. We selected Windows 10 for intermediate and secondary grade levels. Each device has at least an 11-inch screen, a touchscreen, a convertible keyboard, a webcam, a microphone, and speakers. Primary grade students use iOS tablets. Through the generous support of our community, we have deployed 100-- we will deploy 130,000 devices by August 2019, including over 30,000 this summer at 50 elementary schools. We still have some elementary schools that are BYOD or Bring Your Own Device. In a Bring Your Own Device site, students are encouraged to bring a device from home that meets similar feature requirements and students who cannot are provided a device by the district. The district's BYOD sites will be phased out in cohorts five through eight. A key challenge in the initial years of the Launch Ed Digital Learning Program was how to support student learning outside of the school day when they did not have reliable access to wireless internet in their home or community. Board Policy IKB states that "The board realizes that not every home has access to a wired or wireless internet connection. This has been taken into consideration when assigning homework to students. The board will make provisions for students who do not have access to a wired or wireless internet connection. Those students will be provided with offline access to electronic or digital content necessary for practice where practical and on an as-requested basis." To address this challenge, partnerships were developed with the Sprint 1 Million Project and the T-Mobile Empowered Program that resulted in the deployment of 22,400 hotspots. The deployment provided access to high-speed SIPA and COPA-compliant data to, for students in grades six through 12 and enabled the district to close the homework gap. One of our major partners, Sprint, was named an Outstanding Partners in Education for OCPS in 2018 at the Addition School Volunteers and Partners in Education Community Outreach Recognition Event. The majority of students with a hotspot used over one gigabyte of data per month to access instructional materials and resources. Outside of school hours login to Launchpad to access instructional resources has risen to an average of 70,000 logins per month as students access blended instructional materials outside of the regular school day.
The Launch Ed Digital Learning Program invests heavily in human capital by providing professional development and training to all staff. This ensures they are prepared for the next generation of instruction using integrated technology and digital tools. The Launch Ed Digital Learning Program supports schools in this effort by providing three unique Launch Ed Learns courses for classroom teachers, each worth 36 in-service points. Teachers are given automatic access to the course on their Canvas dashboard. Last year, 1,251 teachers voluntarily chose to complete at least one course to better themselves professionally in blended learning. The courses have also proven helpful for new teachers and those transferring to a one-to-one school. Learning does not stop when the school year ends. In response to teacher feedback, the teacher and districts launched the Learning Management System Canvas to make implementing blended learning easier. The Launch Ed Digital Learning Program offers voluntary compensation for teachers who attend two days of hands-on training on the Canvas Learning Management System over the summer. To date, 4,482 teachers and 230 administrators have taken part in trainings. The 4,482 teachers trained represents over 50% of all teachers in the Launch Ed Digital Learning Program. OCPS is the flagship district for the use of Canvas. As you can see in the statistics above, we have had nearly 29 million launches of Canvas this school year alone. Recently, the CEO of Instructure, the parent company of Canvas, visited OCPS for two days to learn about our successful implementation with the goal of integrating pieces of our rollout plan into the company's overall district support strategy. The Canvas Learning Management System is also used by several local universities such as the University of Central Florida. Our school district is fortunate to have nearly 230 digital curriculum teacher leaders stationed at Launch Ed sites to provide job-embedded support to classroom teachers as they transition to a blended learning environment. Digital curriculum teacher leader teams typically include three to five school staff led by their library media specialist. Digital curriculum teacher leaders at all levels begin professional development one year prior to launch. At the secondary level, professional learning continues for four years with four distinct levels of learning. In the first year, the focus is on how teachers can use technology in direct instruction and with the gradual release model. This level provides teachers a toe in the water and can often be seen as tridigital. The second level focuses on strategies for processing, practicing, monitoring, and tracking student progress with digital tools. The third level of learning focuses on differentiation, specifically providing student voice and choice in each unit of instruction. The fourth level of learning focuses on transforming lessons with flipped and rotational models, maker spaces, and project-based learning. Over the course of four years, digital curriculum teacher leaders receive over 140 hours of professional development, which is shared with classroom teachers to build capacity on their campus. At the elementary level, digital curriculum teacher leaders participate in only the first two levels of learning for a total of 72 hours of professional learning since differentiated learning and rotational models are already common practice in our elementary schools. While digital curriculum teacher leader professional development is focused on classroom practice, the Launch Ed Digital Learning Program also supports instructional and content coaches in coaching blended learning through a newly deployed module in the Facilitative Coaches Series. The Facilitative Coaches Series is a program to develop capacity in new and aspiring coaches, which is organized by the Professional Learning Department. To date, over 100 coaches have completed the module which involves practicing, building blended lessons, and coaching teachers on using rotational models in their classroom. This year, we have even begun working with parent engagement liaisons. The Orange Educational Technology Conference provides an opportunity for staff to showcase innovative integrations of technology resources within their instructional practice to their coworkers. Teachers are chosen as presenters through a selection process that includes review of their proposal by Curriculum and Digital Learning Department staff. Last year, over 200 teachers attended the Orange Educational Technology Conference and this year, over 250 teachers attended on April 27th at Edgewater High School.
The Launch Ed Digital Learning Program sustains community engagement by developing and implementing programs that increase community and parental support through training and constant communication. Each spring, the Launch Ed Digital Learning Program hosts virtual question-and-answer sessions where parents learn about the digital learning program, can ask questions to district leaders, and get answers on demand. Although available to all parents, we target those parents whose schools will be going one-to-one for the first time. The live sessions are recorded and curated on YouTube so that they can be accessed on demand. These videos have been viewed over 6,000 times to date. Last week, we completed six live virtual Q&amp;A sessions for elementary schools. A recorded synopsis of these sessions will be sent to schools to share with their communities next week. The summer before a school launches digital learning, parents have the opportunity to attend a hands-on open house where they can learn to use the tools their students will use in class. Annually, the open houses are attended by over 2,000 families. This year, open house will be held at the 50 Cohort Six Elementary Schools between July 23rd and August 3rd.
Educating our families doesn't end at the start of the school year. The Launch Ed Digital Learning Program participates in all face-to-face Parent Academy events and provides parents with hands-on opportunity to learn things that matter to them, like using the Canvas Parent Mobile Apps for iOS and Android or how to model the use of GSuite with their family. We also participate in at least one annual virtual Parent Academy session where we reach hundreds of families right from the comfort of their living room to discuss how to leverage digital tools to engage and connect with OCPS. Sometimes, families can't make it to an event or need information on demand. For this, we provide the Interactive Launch Ed Family Technology Handbook, which addresses the top 17 topics for families. This resource is updated annually and distributed via Connect Orange, social media, school, and district websites. An additional topic that was added this year was student data loss prevention. This infographic explains the ways in which OCPS ensures data is kept private and secure. Since published, the Family Technology Handbook has had over 100,000 views.
While the last six years have been an amazing journey, there is still work to be done. To begin, we are focused on increasing the depth of technology integration into our schools from basic entry level to the transformational level. Transformational classroom instruction includes encouraging innovative use of tools to facilitate higher-order learning activities that may not have been possible without the use of technology. We know that this takes time for schools to fully integrate technology, but we also know we have teachers and school administrators doing amazing things on their campus. Each year, we report to the Florida Department of Education the percentage of schools at each, of each level of integration as a requirement of the digital classroom plan. It's, it's in the Spring Technology Resource Inventory that comes out annually. The percentage represents the highest level the majority of teachers are capable of integrating at. There was a 15% increase in schools at the adaption level last year. There was a 7% increase in schools at the infusion level last year. And there was a 6% increase in schools at the transformation level last year. Now, nearly 60% of our schools are integrating technology at the adaption level and beyond. You may have heard the catchphrase "one-to-one by 21." OCPS is embarking on the final phase of its one-to-one rollout targeting elementary schools. In August 2019, 50 schools will begin infusing, will begin using blended learning in grades K through 5.
The approach to digital learning in elementary school will be different approach than the secondary level, but just as impactful. Elementary schools will have a blended approach to learning and the classroom teacher will have access to both online and print resources such as textbooks, workbooks, and student planners. They will use technology devices based on their classroom needs and when they feel the activity is appropriate. While the student will have access to a device, they will not be taking these devices home on a daily basis. The Launch Ed Digital Learning Program encompasses much more than student laptops and tablets. It includes a full digital learning classroom package. Cohort Six elementary teachers and students will return to the school to find their former overhead projectors, whiteboards, and student desktop presentation stations have been replaced with state-of-the-art document cameras, interactive flat panels, iPads, and convertible laptops. Document cameras can be used to bring student outside explorations like a butterfly inside and onto the big screen so everyone can explore together. Interactive flat panels incite students to learn and play together using virtual manipulators and digital ink. And student iPads and convertible laptops are used to extend learning alongside physical materials. For example, here you can see a student using physical and digital manipulators to make combinations of 13 objects on their iPad and recording, bringing their story off the page by recording their own video. The final component of the Launch Ed Digital Learning Classroom Package is the audio enhancement, which includes inceiling speakers, lullaby microphones, and a cue ball. Using audio enhancement helps to ensure all students can hear instruction no matter where they sit. The cue ball is a throwable microphone that is unique to elementary classrooms. It can be used when students in many ways, such as games, physical movement, cooperative learning, and even simple teacher-led questioning to bring learning to life. Finally, as we make use of-- Finally, as we make use of technology in our daily work, we recognize there are always new and innovative technologies. We are exploring ways to develop demonstration sites for project-based learning and innovative technologies. Project-based learning demonstration sites in all board member districts will be developed through a partnership with the Buck Institute for Educational's PBL Works. Innovative technology demonstration sites will include distance learning, three-dimensional modeling with HP Sprouts, maker spaces and media centers, virtual reality, Seven Space Labs, collaborative furniture, and flexible seating. Innovation is not just about one-to-one device, but about opportunities for our students and teachers to share creative ways students can learn, collaborate, and design. I will turn the presentation back to Dr. Jenkins for any further comments. Thank you.
Thanks to the team and for all of your incredible work and your leadership in this area. Madam Chair, members of the board, happy to answer any questions you might have.
Member Gould.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Phenomenal. I mean, it's been such an incredible journey, the rollout. Just a couple of things. You were talking about the CAP award or the CAP certifications. Those certifications, are they aligned with the workforce tools that are out there like Microsoft Office, which is the most prevalent, and Google Docs and things, so that the skills that they're learning are transferable to those software components?
That's a great question. So, I like to think of them as baby certificates because they feed directly into the industry certifications that we see in late middle school and high school. For example, the Cape Digital Tools Certificate is on Word Processing and covers generic features that would be available in Microsoft Word and Google Docs and feeds directly into the Microsoft Office Suite certification later.
It's a beautiful dream coming true. Okay. The other thing that I wanted to ask you about is, I know that some of our teachers that have not grown up in the digital age are not as comfortable, and I was very glad to hear about the training modules and those resources. But could we, we have, we are rich in technology companies here. Most people don't know that, of course. Our former mayor and chair does.
I'm like, who doesn't know that?
Yeah. But, but a lot of people don't really realize the depth of the talent that we have here. Could we ask them to start something like Econ Academy for our teachers in the, in this digital realm so that not only maybe they do simple tutorials, but they actually could have a community board where they're answering questions? I mean, we don't necessarily want the proton laser physicists answering those questions, but the, the folks that work the help desks and create those app programs that are used to kind of delivering it to the consumer. Because that's, I haven't found anybody who's not excited about what we're doing, especially when they learn that we're really not trying to make kids sit and watch screen time all the time, that it's really getting us to that experiential maker space learning environment. Once they get that, they get it. But that, you know, some of those teachers are very nervous coming along. And, and modules are great, but then they still need, they need the backup. So that would, that would be one other thing. I love what we're doing with the coaches. That's fantastic. There were, I mean, there were so many things that were just awesome, but those are the things I see that kind of bubble up in implementation as concerns, that you're really listening and trying to combat. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Member Castor Dental.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you for that presentation. It seems like we've really come a long way in all of the equipment that we're using, and it does look like it's cutting edge. I'm glad that there was an element to this rollout of the exposure for parents at the open houses where they can do hands-on, because as a parent of a student who was in high school last year, I felt like I was at a loss. I wasn't sure which of the applications were relevant or were used or were accessible. So, I think continuing to update parents even after the open house, when they may have more questions when their kids are actually using the, the devices would be great. And doing that outside of the parent academies, because not many, not all parents have the ability to go to those. I'm glad we're not replacing textbooks. I know that's a concern of a lot of my constituents when they see the one-to-one device for elementary. I'm glad we're still using workbooks and having that access and that the one-to-one devices are simply a supplement to those, to the classrooms. I didn't hear in this presentation, but I just want to clarify for principals, teachers, and parents that with this one-to-one device implementation, we're not mandating use for students. And then, would that mean that principals are not mandating use for their teachers?
So, that is correct as well. So, teachers have discretion on when and how to use technology in their classroom based on what the activity calls for. So, for example, if the particular activity calls for hands-on manipulatives, then that would be the best choice for them. If they were to use online resources, then that would be acceptable for some activities. But there is no mandate for a certain amount of time that anyone has to use the device. It is at the teacher's professional judgment. And then, we provide best practices on when and how teachers should use the technology. So, for example, a good best practice would be focusing on creation versus consumption, or balancing online and offline activities so that students are not sitting for too long.
And as a principal, I would not want to mandate how they teach that standard. I give them the autonomy to do that with their own creativity, and that digital device is a, is a tool, just like a manipulative or a piece of paper and pencil. So...
I appreciate that. I just want to make sure that that message is, is heard by everyone, because it hasn't. And I've had principals ask me, they, they've told me that they're not so sure that that's the message or that's what is expected. So, I just want to make sure that that's clear. Thank you. Also, on the handbook, I noticed that there was the addition at the end, the student data loss prevention. Can you just touch on what that means?
Yeah, absolutely. So, we worked with our Information Technology Services Team to look at some of the procedures and policies they've put into place to kind of harden our student data practices. And there's a top 10 list of the things that we've done, such as looking at better data center security, looking at different password reset options for students, making sure all vendors sign a non-disclosure agreement, you know, various practices like that. And then, we update that annually to make sure that we keep current with whatever the latest and greatest they're doing is.
Thank you. I appreciate that, because that I've, I feel is, is very important. And also, if I can recommend some of the best practices of, of keeping students' personal information private for teachers when they're using their own applications in the classroom, because a lot of them, the ones that they use are not on Launchpad. They might be Blooms or some other kind of classroom management that uses student information. Can we do some best practices for teachers when they use their own apps that they sign up for, so that they're not unwittingly giving out student information?
Absolutely. We can update that.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Member Gala.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, I want to say thank you. You guys did such a wonderful job, and I know that we spent a lot of time together, and you graciously answered all my questions and alleviated all my fears. So, now, I'm, I'm actually very excited that we're bringing this to elementary school. Member Castor Dental and Member Gould kind of hit on some of the things that I wanted to bring up. I just wanted to tell you, I was super impressed, and I wanted to, and I know we had this conversation about the planners, but if you could just reiterate that there, there still will be planners for that communication tool with the parents?
Yes.
I think that sometimes gets lost.
At the elementary level, there will be paper planners. There is no requirement to get rid of paper planners. And then, there will also be an online planner available in Canvas for parents that choose to utilize that option.
Wonderful.
And they're still tattered at the end of the year.
Wonderful, because that'll put a lot of, a lot of parents' minds at ease. And then, when we met, I was, I was also, I brought up a concern about some of the technology that we use, especially with our kindergarten and first graders, about how they are easily, I use the terminology squirrel, and they look the other way. They're easily distracted. So, can you just, and if I missed it, I apologize, just give us a brief overview about the controls you were telling me about, about how so much, the teacher will have so much control so that they can really bring it back and not lose control of the classroom, in case that makes you...
Sure. I'll start, and then I'd love for Principal Lineout to expand. So, at the kindergarten and first grade level, our students will be using iOS or iPad tablets, and those come with a feature called Apple Classroom. And what that allows for the teacher to do is to see all of the iPads that are in the room in real time and be able to lock students onto a certain app, control what students are doing, redirect them. They can even turn the iPads off or freeze the screen if necessary. And then, in grades 2 through 5, they're using a product called Land School Classroom Management Software, which has similar functionality for Windows devices. They can see the tiles for each student's screen and be able to freeze their screens, send them a message, direct them to a site, redirect behavior as necessary, both for motivation and then, of course, to redirect inappropriate behavior. What has your experience been with that?
Absolutely. You walk into a kindergarten classroom at the beginning of the year, and the teacher says, "Put in a 4," and you'll hear, "What's a 4?" So, the transgression and learning that happens in that kindergarten classroom on that iPad is monumental. I want to go in my classrooms, and I want to see blended. I want to see a couple stations with devices, but I want to see them working with their hands. I want to see them building. I wanted to see them using and manipulating vocabulary and finding pictures with it. So, it's very much blended in the kindergarten, first grade classrooms as all classrooms.
Thank you so much. Member Lopez.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for the presentation. And I have two questions. The first one is the, the digital tool certificates. They take that independently or in a specific subject?
So, there are actually more than one option available. Currently, most students take those within an ICT certification or ICT class, which is an elective at middle school. But they can also take multiple certifications, and they can be taken independently as well. Each school develops their own plan for implementation.
Thank you. And the next one is, which criteria do you use to choose the pilot elementary school?
For project-based learning?
Yes.
So, those were chosen with learning community leadership, and so, we basically worked with the learning community and the cabinet to determine the correct schools for implementation.
Thank you.
Thanks.
And Vice Chair Gordon.
Yeah. I'm sorry. Thank you, Madam Chair. Do you all have my list? Okay. Have you all shared it with Dr. Jenkins?
We added it to our...
I saw some of it on there.
Yes.
But did you, did Dr. Jenkins like it? Madam Chair, that ends my report.
Excellent. Did you all take note of my concerns?
Great. Oh, wait a minute. You know what? I, I really got to give it to you all. I, you know I would give you all a hard time, but I, I was so impressed. I'm very, Maribel?
Mm-hmm.
Mariel.
Mariel.
Mariel. I remember. I see your name on the day. And then, Maurice, Maurice met me, I think, for the first time, and Mr., he already knows me. But you guys are so smooth, all, all of this excitement. I kept saying, "Come on with it. Tell it." You, you have such great stuff, and you know this is Dr. Jenkins' heart, you know, of doing it. And I always have to say, Darryl, you know, also, because a little bit, I'm always proud of Anne Lyman and Dr. Jenkins allowing us, giving us that opportunity to just begin, because look where we are right now in this program. But I really want to say hats off to your team. You did an excellent job in presenting this to us. And Dr. Jenkins, thank you for allowing them to present it to us before it gets to the board table. It makes it so much nicer and easier for us to comment and see where you're going with your goals and how can this board help you to succeed and get it done. Because some things we could say to the superintendent, we'd like to see that a little bit more. And what can we do as a board, Dr. Jenkins, to help you help your team get it done? And you are there. I think, Dr. Jenkins, all the Ts were crossed and the Is were dotted, and I think you're well on your way, and this fits so well within this strategic plan. You're going to be one of the stars in that plan, and we thank you so much for your team, Dr. Bexler. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Jenkins and Madam Chair.
Dr. Jenkins?
Just briefly, Madam Chair, members of the board, I would not miss an opportunity to again thank our community, because the halfpenny sales tax, if you recall, not only did it renovate our buildings, but the renewal specifically supported technology. So, all of the infrastructure and the devices are thanks to this wonderful community who supports our young people and their learning needs. And so, once again, hats off to Orange County citizens for that support, and to the team who has well implemented all of our directives, and to this board who has always been supportive of the initiative as well.
Thank you, Dr. Jenkins. I was hoping to, you know, they say imitation is the most sincere form of flattery. I was trying to imitate and succinctly communicate. Did you get everything that we talked about, and did you share with Dr. Jenkins? Because I thought that Vice Chair did a great job with that. But I do want to share very quickly with the board, I had a very good meet, we had a great meeting with a constituent, very informed constituent and a very concerned constituent. She had, had done an extensive amount of research, and a lot of the things that, that you all have brought up individually here are things that were, I think, heavy on her mind, and she wanted assurance. So, the one thing that, the one thing that I would ask us to try to figure out, and Dr. Jenkins, I don't have any idea how you do this, but I know in an organ, well, actually, I don't know in an organization this large, because this is so large. But I think it's inevitable that no matter how hard you try to communicate, if you over-communicate, people don't listen. And if you under-communicate, they don't get, they feel like you don't talk to them enough. And so, I don't know what the key is, but the, I know when we roll this out, there are going to be, there are going to be some teachers that are going to communicate that they have to use this, or they have to use this too much, in spite of all the best efforts to make sure that they understand that, that this is really a tool, one tool, and that they need to use their best judgment, and it's not being forced on them. So, I don't know what the answer is. It's not about this as much as it is just about the overall challenge of communicating. And I see how much you communicate, and you use all different types of means, which is exactly what I would think would be the best way, but I still anticipate we'll have that problem. So, I, so I just kind of, I just think we need to expect there are going to be some bumps along the way, because some people, in spite of best efforts, are not going to get the message, and we're just going to have to keep working at that. But if anybody does have some magic way to figure out, you know, if every teacher could say, "This is the way to communicate," but I can even tell you myself, sometimes there's just so much overload that I'm like, it's just, you, you just have a hard time concentrating. So, I think you all have done a great job. Looking forward to this. I felt so much better after our meeting. And with that, I think, are we good to move on? All right. Thank you all. Great presentation. Would have paid more attention if we hadn't already had the presentation, but great presentation again, again. It was even better the second time. I do. Okay. So, oh my gosh, we are just getting started with my public comment announcements. Do we have anybody here that wishes to make public comments? If there's nobody here that wishes to make public comments, I'm going to skip the five-minute explanations of what you can and can't talk about, and we're just going to move on and be a little more efficient. So, next up, we have several public hearings, and the first public hearing is Request for Approval of the Reasons to the Board Policy, EDB, Maintenance and Control of Materials and Equipment. Dr. Jenkins? And I think you said we're going to take all of these, we're going to open all of them at one time, correct?
You can, Madam Chair, if you would, you'll open each one for public comment, but then take one motion and one vote to approve them.
We'll open them one at a time, and we'll keep them open.
Let me give, for the sake of the public, so no one thinks we are simply looking over these today, we had, here are the dates that I generally publish. Notification to CTA was on May 6th. It was published in the Sentinel on May 12th. Cabinet meeting, May 13th. Rule Development Workshop on June 4th. And here we are now at the public hearing on June 11th for each of these policies, EDB, IHBH, KF, JRA, and JIC. So, if we will, Madam Chair, take up each one for any public comment, and then at the end, we can certainly, you certainly might entertain a motion... end, we can certainly, you certainly might entertain a motion to approve them.
Okay. Again, we're going to take up item 301 regarding policy EDB. Do we have any members of the public? All right, seeing none. We'll move on. Are there any members of the public that wish to address the board on item 302, IHBH? Seeing none. We're going to move on to the next public hearing, that's 3.03, and that's Policy KF, Public Use of School Board Facilities. Any members of the public wish to address the board? Seeing none. We're going to move on to the next, which is item 304. And that's Board Policy JRA, Student Records. Any members of the public wish to address the board? Seeing none. We'll move on to the next, which is item 305. That's Board Policy JIC, Code of Student Conduct. Any members of the public wish to address the board? Seeing no members of the public, I will entertain a motion to approve all policies that we just addressed. Yes, Member Castor Dental.
Madam Chair, I move to approve these revisions.
We have a motion by Member Gallo to approve the policies as they're currently drafted. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Member Gould. What did I say?
Castor Dental.
What did I say? Oh, oh, you pressed your button, didn't you? You messed with me.
I'm sorry.
She pressed her button, it flashed up while I was, yeah, I'm sorry. Thank you. Let the record reflect that the motion was made by Member Castor Dental. It was seconded by Member Gould. And before we take action on this, Member Gallo, you should be recognized.
Just very briefly, I just wanted to say a shout out to the team that worked on this Code of Student Conduct. Did it not go on?
Thank you. I wanted to give a shout out to the group, especially that worked on the Code of Student Conduct, because it was long, it was intense. I think they did a fabulous job of explaining it, putting it into layman's terms that the parents will understand, and repositioning stuff that will be, that will really benefit our parents and students. So thank you.
Thank you. And we are not finished with the Code of Student Conduct. That is the first round of revisions. It will be coming back based on all the input that received by the board, which I think was invaluable. Member Bird, we still haven't taken action on this, but...
Yeah, I just briefly wanted to say almost the same thing about, actually, all of these policies and all the policies we worked on in the work session. I want to thank the staff and Dr. Jenkins, which I've told you privately. I think that the way you've listened to this new board is evident in these changes, and I just really appreciate it. I think it's, you've done a great job. So thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you. All right, we have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, moving on to our agenda. Dr. Jenkins, are there any changes to the consent agenda?
No changes, Madam Chair.
Great. There's no changes to consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Motion by Vice Chair. Is there a second? Second by Member Cobert. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We have, under non-request or non-consent, we have request approval to nominate and appoint the Florida School Board Association's legislative representative and an alternative. Dr. Jenkins?
Thank you, Madam Chair. As Secretary of the Board, I do have two who have agreed, but we will need an official vote, vote by the board. Member Linda Cobert has agreed to be your representative, and her alternate has volunteered, Angie Gallo.
Okay. Is there a motion to accept that slate to represent us? A motion by Member Gould, is there a second? Second by Vice Chair. And second, third, and fourth by the Vice Chair. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Under information, Dr. Jenkins?
No further report, Madam Chair, members of the board.
All right. Mr. Rodriguez, report from the school district, as general counsel.
No report, Madam Chair.
All right, thank you. Any, any, I forgot to ask this, I'm sorry, when we had our pre-agenda meeting and we completely ran out, do we have any reports from any committee members? Okay. Statement of policy-level issues that you'd like the board to address? And let me first go to Melissa Bird. Member Bird, you had, you had raised an issue earlier, and then we're going to go to Member Gallo and then Member Gould.
Yes, I just wanted to see if we could either, I don't know what your pleasure will be, Madam Chair, but either take a motion or see if we can come up with a consensus for this board to adopt a priority or a goal to make competitive debates, debate teams, and try to get competitive debate teams in every one of our high schools in Orange County within the next couple of years.
Okay. Okay. And Dr. Jenkins? And then, while we're on that subject, Vice Chair Gordon has a comment specifically on that. So, go ahead. You want to...
I'm wondering if the board has consensus on it or whatever, can it be written into the strategic plan? Took your brains.
Okay, yeah. Thank you. Yeah. Okay, thank you.
See where you got a lot of concern?
Okay, yeah. Because that is very good.
Madam Chair, members of the board, if we have consensus, we would love to include that as one of our objectives and one of our strategies in the strategic plan that we've been working on.
All right, do we have consensus?
Yes.
We have consensus, very good. Member Gallo?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. So just two items, real quick. Number one, we discussed earlier, was just a policy to graduation. So I'd like that, to bring that before the board and get consensus that we will develop a policy surrounding graduations.
Absolutely. Speaking, yes. Any disagreement by the board members? I know, I think several board members have, yes, very good. I think everybody, individually has, but we appreciate you bringing this issue forward specifically, so absolutely.
Thank you. And I have one more item relating to the food allergy policy. I know that we just updated this policy last year, but I would like to request a review of the forms that we used, used within this policy. I believe that a few of them are very outdated, and I would like staff to review those for content and then develop some procedures on how we can best handle our growing population of students with severe allergies.
Dr. Jenkins? And while we're on that subject, this may have already been addressed, but something that I had wanted ever since my kids were in elementary school, and Dr. Jenkins, you can tell me if we're already doing this, I always had a concern that we have so many children coming through our cafeterias, especially our younger children, but all children, can choke. And if you've ever witnessed anybody choking, it's a very scary thing, having children of my own, one that had, yeah. And so I, so I wasn't sure if, I just want to make sure that we had somebody in every elementary school cafeteria that's trained in that. And that wasn't the case many years ago. So if we do, great. If we don't, along with, well, we're talking about cafeteria and safety, if we could add that to, it's very easy training. So if we could add that to it, if we don't already do it, I'll feel like something that I had wanted to do for now. Wait, I'm not going to tell you how many years, because my, but a long time, I'll feel, I'll feel good about that. Thank you. All right. Member Gould?
Thank you. I totally support, and I know we've already gotten consensus on this, but I totally support the debate and the forensics education. I just came back from my niece's graduation in Michigan, where the public school there, and I don't agree with this completely, but they had, the three student speeches were all from the forensics group that, and they were incredible, absolutely incredible deliveries. They did not have their valedictorian or salutatorians speak, which I thought was odd. And we had a big discussion about that as a family.
Like a good debate?
Yeah. Discussion and debate amongst the family. But I wanted to say, after seeing the style of those speeches and, and really the emphasis, especially under the forensic speech program, because it really is not only about the content, it's about the delivery, and I think that's as important in this day and age. But that's not really why I wanted to talk today. I was talking with a local developer, and I was also happened to be watching the Ford Innovation Station when I was in Michigan. And there is the ability to 3D print buildings now. And I know we're not quite ready to do, and I mentioned this to, I mentioned it to the superintendent today. I know that, if Jeff is still here, he's having a heart attack, because I brought it up to him in our meeting. But I know we're not ready to 3D print an entire school, but I think that it may be worth looking at for some facilities, like if we're going to put in locker rooms at stadiums, or we're looking at some kind of concession-out facilities to test it. They can also 3D print in concrete these days. I found that out on the Ford Innovation Station and watched how they were, concrete printed a bridge in Norway that's on a bike trail. But I think that would be really an interesting thing, because we could engage our students in helping to create that, design wiring for that, design plumbing for that if it's necessary. And it could just be such a cool prototype project. And then maybe even offer it as an affordable housing option to our community if we can test it out and, and utilize some things, because it's much, much cheaper. So that's what I want to talk...
Wow. Okay. I got to look that one up on the internet, right? Whoa. Wow. Okay. Okay. Member Lopez?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to talk about City Year. I am so proud that we have that type of service in our county, but I would love to have the same opportunity in areas like the District Two, like Colonial High School, Stonewall Jackson, and Englewood Elementary. I think that we are sharing the same type of data, specifically in poverty and also in the achievement gap. It would be great if I have the support of my members to have that in that area.
And, Dr. Jenkins, help me out. How exactly does that work? How does City Year make those decisions?
So, Member Lopez and I had this conversation earlier. Specifically, we're not expanding the number of schools, because we had a bit of a challenge to get all of those slots filled for this past year. So we're not expanding this year, but in the subsequent year, we look for some of our, through our philanthropic efforts, we look for some sponsors to chair the fundraising for those teams, and we are happy to include Colonial for the next year. Just no expansion this year due to some concerns about actually being able to get all the positions filled.
Thank you. And Member Gordon?
All righty. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Madam Superintendent, and thank you for bringing that up. Joanna, so for us, because that's important, and Mrs. Gould, all of the ideas tonight have just been wonderful. I would find it robbery, but City Year sitting in the audience, not to thank them for living our dream, because with Dr. Bridget Williams and the, oh gosh, the military, see, my mind is gone, but the young, the lady that you had us to work with, you know, because we were able to travel back and forth to the different cities where City Year was. It does cost, and like Dr. Jenkins said, you do need sponsors, it's not a freebie. So, but our children, they learn so much, and that, and that was passed tonight on the board and giving accolades to you with your leadership and that. And Dr. Bridget Williams, is she still working with that also? Oh, well, I'm sorry to hear that, because you never forget how, they really worked extremely hard on that, along with you all running me up and down the road, too. But I want to thank you all so much, because you really did make the dream come true in our school dresses. Yes, you did it. You made it come true. So I don't mind you moving on, because those students may become City Year. You understand what I'm saying? I think you've inspired us enough that some of our students, and I didn't say moving on, I'm saying adding on. Yeah, so for the next year, you know, because they can't leave us, you just can't come and leave us. We know it's a process. But that's not my part, I'm like Pam. My part, the part that I brought in, Mr. Rosen, had been, you know, he had me out, I think last year, to, to his hotel to meet with several of the Haitian leaders. And he did what they called a video. And he, it's actually, he's been building houses for years, many, many years, and for several years in Haiti. And I wish you, when we saw that, Mrs. Gould, when we saw the houses being built with the concrete, I went, "Oh, my God." So we wouldn't want to, all of his efforts, you, we really need to ask him, while we are looking at this, look at all of the exposures and get with those builders that know about this. But Mr. Rosen has been building homes in Haiti for quite some time, and for us to, you know, video over there and talk with the people, and I, you know, I never did know, I said, "Well, I wonder why you have me sitting here." But he wanted me to see it, the, everybody around the table, they were actually building the homes. He was telling them what to do, where to move things. The cameras were there. It was just amazing. And they were the small homes. And if you have ever gone to the home show, he has had them on display. And there are other, that was still at the home show this week. Okay, at the Civic Center, is it? Okay, but you should see, but so we really need to put our efforts together. We have the resources right here. And, and my reason for saying it is because you mentioned, you know, the homeless, but not just the homeless, but those families within our communities that cannot afford the, the homes, they cannot afford the apartments. And then they also have those little tiny homes. And I mean, there's no harm in putting together a community. That's what I'm saying, that, you know, the community where they have the little tiny homes, and then they don't have to pay that much. All of those things, and there are people that will donate land and, and everything, and they know that it is going for a good cause and for families. So, Dr. Jenkins, maybe, you know, you could get with Mr. Rosen also, and those others that were at the home show that showed us those homes. It is amazing. And it's right in our area, and he's actually helping the people in our community from Haiti. All of these people around the table were from Haiti, and they all had name status, but they, I was sitting there watching on television how they were building the homes in, in Haiti, well, you know, live broadcasting. So basically, I just wanted to say, these are great ideas, and this is one way that we, as a school board, can reach out and begin to look for people that want to partner with us and become business partners through our additions office and help us to get these families to where they want to be, because you have a lot of business people out there that want to put our families in homes. And it doesn't have to be a mansion. It just, and he had the running water and everything. It's amazing. So thank you all for bringing up some of this.
Cool. Member Lopez and Member Gallo?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want a little bit of clarification on the sponsorship. If we can get the sponsorship for City Year from the outside or only from inside, how it, how it works?
We take all sponsorships.
So...
So, so, for example, Universal was a sponsorship for one team. We've had various entities, Darden sponsored, Disney has sponsored, and so we can certainly work on that. I just need a year to give City Year an opportunity to fill all the positions we currently need, and then we'll work, we'll help you work on, during this year, we'll help you work on that next sponsorship.
Thank you. Got it covered. We got you covered.
I'm a teacher. I'm used to that.
That's a, that's a fair comment. Member Gallo? And then Member Castor Dental?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to say, I share my sentiment. I love City Year. I've, I actually took a tour of your facility downtown before I was a school board member when I, as a PTA Legislative Chair, because we were looking to do, to mimic some programs across the state, and we were, we were looking into your program. And I was just blown away by what you, City Year was able to do. And we then took a tour of Oak Ridge, and I dragged along Representative Smith, because I was trying, I'm like, "You have to fund this. We need more funding for City Year." So I made Representative Smith tag along with me, and he was just as impressed as I was with the program. And what I loved about it so much was the circle time and the social, emotional learning and how we reached those kids and bond with those kids and pull them in. And so I just want to say, I was super impressed. Keep up the good work, and I'm just so happy that you chose us to be one of your partners. Thanks.
Absolutely, absolutely. I couldn't say it better. Member Castor Dental? Member Castor Dental? Is it Dr. Castor Dental?
It is Dr. Castor Dental.
But, I like that.
That's fine.
I like that, that sounds good. Dr. Gordon, Dr. Castor Dental? Okay, Dr. Castor Dental.
I like Madam Chair myself, that's, that's lofty. I just, well, while we're on the topic of City Year, I have also been to Evans and others where I've seen the group in action and I know of the great effect that your organization has, and I want to throw my two cents in it, that, that I, I appreciate your help and your support of our students and it's paying off, so thank you. But what I really wanted to talk about...
Oh, no, not another one of those.
Yeah? I wanted to mention the letter that you penned to Governor DeSantis about our, I guess, asking the governor to veto House Bill 7103 and to sign House Bill 207, which would give us some tools for managing our rapid growth. And I think this is an excellent letter and I, I know you're, you're the one who wrote it and will sign it, but I wanted to let you know that I support your sentiments and I don't know if you wanted to share a little background or, or if I just let you know that I appreciate the letter.
Well, I appreciate, I thought you were going to tell me about the typo on page three.
No.
Which has been fixed. But, you mean for you to share a little background or for me to share a little background?
For you, yes.
Actually, I hope, I hope that the letter shares enough background and I hope you all have a chance to read it, but the reality is we have tools that no other, no other school district has in the state of Florida. And in spite of our tools, in spite of the support the community has given us with funding, we still struggle to keep up. And if we lose any of the tools that we have, it will be highly problematic, either for our schools and our students or for the development that we need to meet the needs that we just heard Vice Chair talk about, the workforce housing, which is a huge problem. We're, we have the largest problem now in the nation when it comes to workforce housing. Yes, exactly. And so we don't want to be in a situation where we, we cripple the ability for people to find a home so that we have schools. We want that delicate balance. And I think we've done a yeoman's job of trying to strike that balance, and I just really hope that the legislature doesn't take that away in the effort to try to make sure that we give every penny back to developers. So in exchange for that, they're very likely going to lose their ability to develop. So I'm hoping that it's a wake-up call. I had a good conversation today with the Director of Legislative Affairs for the governor, just happens to be Stephanie Copelousis, who I just happened to work four years ago at DOT. And, but I'm, I'm still not, I'm not, I'm concerned that, that bill has some other things that's very valuable that's going to get passed. And if that's the case, I think we're going to have some very, this community is going to have some very tough decisions to make. And I don't think ours is that tough. Ours is, we have one, one mission, one goal, and that's students and their education. The other jurisdictions have much, they have to balance those, those other needs. So hopefully they'll listen. If you have any, you know, any, the only, it's all in the governor's hands now, it's out of the legislature's hands, so we'll see what happens. But thank you, thank you. And I just wanted, before I signed it, before I sent it, I wanted to make sure that everybody had a chance to read it and that there was no concern, because, you know, okay, okay, good. Yeah, thank you. All right, Member Cobert? I'm sorry, Member Gallo and then Member Cob, boy, it just keeps going. Member Gallo and then Member Cobert. Member Gallo?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just, for informational purposes, I just want to let you know that the bill will be discussed in EDR, which is the Revenue Estimated Impact Conference tomorrow at 9:00 a.m. So hopefully they'll do a deep dive and, and see how damaging this could be for school systems. But for those out there who would like to tune in on the Florida Channel, they will be discussing this bill tomorrow at 9:00 a.m.
Yes, thank you. And Member Cobert? So, Madam Chair, I just wanted to commend you for taking the lead on bringing this to the governor's desk. This is a very well-worded and powerful letter on an issue that's vital to our children and our entire community. So you have my full support and I do highly commend you for taking the lead. Thank you, thank you. And we also heard from, I don't know if Scott is still with us, we heard from, what is, who was it Scott you heard from with the school board, the national, the state, who was it? Joy Frank, with, that's the School Board Association, Superintendent's Association. They reached out to Scott today regarding this and we provided, I hope it went, I got a, one of those Mailer Demon things, hopefully they got a copy, and they wanted to also advocate on our behalf and get that message across. So we're doing what we can, we write our, we are right down to the wire as you, and that's the reason that letter needs to go out tonight, to try to get in their hands before they have that meeting tomorrow. So keep your fingers crossed, because I don't, I don't like the precarious position that we're all going to find ourselves in. But with that, anything else to come up for the board? You going to mention the conference coming up this week?
Right, so, several of us are headed to Wat Tampa tonight and we'll be there in and out this week, because we have the retirement of our employees. So that'll be, some of us will be at the retirement, some of us will be in workshops, learning student with disabilities, some of us will be at the Florida School Board Association, so we're going to be driving back and forth, some will be in Tallahassee. So, and I hope we didn't miss anything. And Dr. Jenkins, you're back and forth, too, because you're, you're going to come back for a retirement also.
Dr. Vasquez.
Dr. Vasquez is doing that one, that's right.
No.
And I want to, and I want to be clear, I'm sorry, Ms. Gordon, Dr. Gordon, the only reason is because that is the only full-day session we have where the commissioner is supposed to be meeting with some...
That's right, with all of the superintendents.
Yeah, and retirement is in the middle of the day, I would miss the entire session. So Dr. Vasquez will quite ably take my place.
She'll handle it, as long as she doesn't switch her terms.
I'm going to hold the fort down here with the retirement and with Pulse coming up, but I know that, yes, and, and the Vice Chair is going to be spending a lot of time on the road as well, being in many places at one time, which nobody does that better. With that, with that, this meeting is now adjourned. Good evening.
Good job.[1784.71]